We'll go right into our work session on fireworks in Clark County. April, are you introducing the topic?
And I do a quick introduction. But yeah, we can have folks sit by us as well, if anybody would like to come up. So this is per council's request, I have another discussion regarding data from the 4th of July last year. And so we have some of our partnering agencies, and it was also requested to invite our partnering agencies to come join in this discussion. So I know there is a brief presentation that has been prepared, and of course, we have the experts in the room to answer any questions.
April 1st, Director of Community Development, and I am joined by some fire districts. I'll let them introduce themselves really quick.
I'm John Nor, I'm the Fire Chief for Clark County Fire Rescue. We serve northwest Clark County, southwest Calis County, including the cities of Woodland, Ridgefield, the center, and about 120 miles, square miles of unincorporated Clark County.
Hello, I'm Chris Drow, Division Chief with Fire District 3. I'm also the Fire Marshal there. So we serve the city battleground and a major portion of the eastern unincorporated county.
I also have somebody from CRESSA that should be online too, if we have any questions for them. So I'm quickly going to go over the stats that we talked about in October of 23, which is a recap of 2023 fireworks fires that had been reported to us. So we didn't have all fire districts at the time that gave us information. It was the information that we could get at the time. So if you want to change a slide, and then one more. And this just goes over the Clark County Code Title 5, which fireworks sales are regulated. Also, the revised code of Washington, Title 70, which basically says that if we wanted to make any changes to our fireworks code, that it would take place a year from adoption. Estimated revenue on the next slide. Okay. Estimated revenue for the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office, which is 40 fireworks stand permits. We cannot charge more than $100 for these by state code. And then the tent fees collected. Also, there were estimated fireworks revenue from the suppliers with the information that we could get from them. And so, next slide. We also spent about 40 hours before the fireworks sales lottery, because that's how you get a permit. There were permit services, about 40 hours for them to process those applications. Fire marshal permit reviews, fireworks stand inspections, and then about 25 hours of fire investigation from the Fire Marshal's Office alone. So I think they estimated $134,000. Oh, wait, $134,000, this is some total for all districts that reported, which were not all the fire districts. There was, so 4th of July is the highest calls into CRESSA or 911 with about, but we did have a nuisance, or they had a nuisance line set up that had about 1,492 calls into In addition, the Fire Marshal's Office had 37 emails, six phone calls, and three voicemails related to fireworks. And we're already counting those also for this year. If we go to go to the next slide. These were the fires that we investigated as the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office. It looks like six single-family residents with the estimations of about $950,000 total As you can see on the next slide, Curtis and Max, when they put this together, they tried to estimate vegetation fires that were most likely also caused by fireworks, but you can't really say that for sure. And if you go to, yep, perfect. So vegetation fires, as you can see though, have drastically increased from 2019 to 2023, even though I don't know how well they were counting them in 2019. But over three times the amount. Clark County Fire Marshal-related, fireworks-related investigations, though, stayed about the same from 2019 to 2023. Due to safety concerns of staff related to resources, the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office did not patrol for noise complaints and/or discharges outside of legal times this year. They also did not do it in 2022. So we have 2022, 2023, and we do not have plans to do it this year either. But the deputies are on call, and they respond to all fire investigations and all injuries if they are called. And with that, I think I will give it to Chief Nor, who has put together some information.
All right, thank you. So what I provided to you was some information. Some of you know, I'm also an elected official in one of the towns here, in Camas. And so two of the council members and myself, a total of three of us, this is an issue in Camas. So we put together some information. Rather than reinvent the wheel, I did put some, took some of those slides and put them together here for information for you. So if you can advance, please. A little bit just outlining what constitutes consumer-grade fireworks at the state. And so you can refer to the RCW there. And there's also information about when it's legal to sell. So as you know, the date to begin sales start on June 28th, and sales will be legal through July 5th. Advance, advance one more, please. These are examples of what is legal in the state of Washington. Washington RCW outlines the floor. We, as jurisdictions, the elected officials have the ability to make it more restrictive. But there's a pretty wide array of what's legal in the state of Washington. What I have found generates the most concern that I hear about as a fire chief, and in my other, my night job, is that it's the big booming mortars that are creating the big issue for folks. And that's not necessarily the smaller fireworks, but it's the big stuff. Next slide, please. These are the items that are illegal. Interestingly, fireworks and bottle rockets are illegal in the state of Washington, as are some other forms of rockets, and then anything that is modified to make a larger explosion, obviously improvised explosive devices like pipe bombs. But we have actually had, over the years, locally, people have tried making what we commonly call the M80 firecracker, but they get a cardboard tube, they pack some powder in, they put some bearings in the ends to help keep it compact, and they blow it off. But where do you think the bearings go? Right? So it creates some dangers for us. Next slide, please. Some states and some local jurisdictions have adopted safe and sane. Safe and sane doesn't really have a national definition. It is generally something that doesn't leave the ground. In the state of Oregon, it's anything that, it can't go more than 12 inches off the ground or move more than six feet horizontally. Down at the bottom of that slide, you'll see what the city of Waschugle identifies as safe and sane. So here in the county, as you all are very aware, there's a variety of different regulations in place. Vancouver doesn't allow any fireworks discharge. Waschugle does safe and sane. The other small cities in the county, as well as unincorporated county, allow consumer-grade fireworks as identified by Washington law. I want to point out the next slide, because I think this one really tells a picture. This was published in the Oregonian in 2021, but I have seen almost the identical slide for most of my career in the fire service. And what it shows is what happens in the fire service on July 4th. Across the country, fires in structures, fires that damage vehicles, fires that damage vegetation absolutely spike on July 4th. Now, there's a person, if you're in law enforcement or the fire service in the West Coast, you've probably heard of and gone to some speaking engagements by a guy named Gordon Graham. He's a retired CHP officer who started a risk management company. And he starts out just about every speech on risk management with the statement, "If it's predictable, it's preventable." And I can tell you that when you take dry weather, hot weather, and you send flaming material into the sky, into the wind, you can predict that it's going to land somewhere and potentially cause a fire. And so if you know that's happening, you can take steps to prevent that. Next slide, please. So some of, myself and the other council members, we did some data research, and we'd come up with the number of fire noise complaints that came into CRESSA during that time. We spoke with CRESSA about that. And so those are the jurisdictions in the county, and how many complaints they got. And you can look on the slide to see when the discharge dates are on those. One anomaly in the county would be the town of Yakult, where they allow discharge for the full week, but they're covered by Clark County Sheriff's Office. And I mentioned on that slide that it was discharged only on July 4th, but there is a jurisdiction that allows a longer period of time. Of note, you will see that the, some of the jurisdictions that have, for example, the city of Vancouver doesn't allow fireworks discharge, yet received a very high number of complaints. That's because people there know that fireworks aren't supposed to be discharged, yet they are, and they want to, you know, make that complaint, so they call CRESSA with that. Next slide, please. These were the number of fireworks-related fires by doing research at CRESSA. So this ranges from a small grass fire up through a structure fire. And as noted by Ms. Furt earlier, how many fires the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office investigated? That doesn't include fires in the city of Vancouver or the cities of Waschugle and Camas, because they have their own fire investigators there. Clark County Fire Investigators provide the investigations in the small cities, Battleground, La Center, Ridgefield, and Woodland. But those other cities have their own fire investigators. Pardon? All right. That was just some information I thought you might find useful with this. I thank you for looking at the issue. I think that as a fire service professional, I have an obligation to point out that fireworks are dangerous. They're dangerous physically, and there's a fire danger. Just a few years ago, and many people don't remember, but we had a young man that was killed in North Clark County, who was within CCFR's response area by a mortar shell that caused severe abdominal damage, and he died. This past year, we had, though it was in Calis County, it was in Woodland, but our portion of our response area, where a teenager lost fingers and a thumb from holding a fireworks. So there are, while we all enjoy them, and I too enjoy a good fireworks display, but we all have to recognize there is an extreme fire danger, and there is physical danger associated with it. Thank you.
Questions by council?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for this information and for all of you coming here. I know we've got, I think, more presentation to go. But, and I noticed some of the information that City of Vancouver provided indicated injuries related to fireworks. Is that something, and you mentioned a couple from your experience, but I don't know that we have that information across the entire county in terms of injuries related to firefighters?
So to my knowledge, there weren't any firefighters injured due to fireworks. There were injuries to residents and the civilian population.
Got it. And in your deliberations related to the city of Camas, or maybe just general opinions on this, you know, the people talk about safe and sane, whatever the definition it might be, but if we were, and looking at this from the lens of public safety, if we were to limit fireworks in any way, what would we, what would be the best preventative, I guess, for, for public safety purposes?
Certainly, that's a policy decision for the elected officials, but there...
I guess what poses, what do you think poses the greatest risk?
I think the greatest risk comes from items that fly high into the sky, get into the wind, and land somewhere unpredictable. So there are fireworks that sit in one place and go off. There are some, for example, cones, spinners, and yes, people say, well, the spinners, they might take off and land somewhere else. They may, but for the most part, they stay in one place. It's items that go into the sky and explode, and then you don't know where they're going to land. They may land in a tree, they may land in brush, they may land on somebody's roof and roll down into the gutters that may or may not be full of leaves or needles. They may land in a vehicle. A few years ago, we had fireworks, a fireworks fire in a vehicle. Somebody said, well, that's a vehicle fire. Well, no, it landed in the back of a pickup truck and got some debris in the pickup truck going. That's a fireworks fire. And so I think anything that's really outside the control of the user has the potential to create the most damage.
Thank you. And then I understand that CRESSA was down for some period of time during the 4th of July. I don't know how long that was, or if the public was fully aware of that, or if they just thought, nobody's answering. Would that affect the data that was collected and the numbers? And really, I wonder how long CRESSA actually was down?
So there may be a CRESSA person online that can answer that. You know, anecdotally, we received complaints to some of the fire districts that people were trying to call and couldn't get through. So I do know that there were reports of that occurring. It's really hard to judge how many people didn't get their call to go through.
I see we have someone from CRESSA. Thank you for coming forward.
All right. Good morning. My name's Dave Fuller. I'm the Director at CRESSA. Last year, during the 4th of July, we did have a phone system outage, lasted about an hour and a half. It impacted not only us, but four other PSAPs across the state. During that time, it was from about 10:30 to 10 after midnight, which tends to be one of our busiest times during the 4th of July, as far as calls go. It does not impact the numbers that were provided. As far as the fire reports, those are based on dispatched calls versus calls coming in. If that makes sense? So the issue we were having with the system is it became overloaded due to a technical failure, where it was actually replicating calls and slowed everything down. But traditionally, we see about a 10%, tenfold increase in calls during the 4th of July, starting with July 3rd through July 6th, we anticipate this year, so.
Thank you. I think it's good for the public to be, understand what was going on at that time. And I imagine it made it difficult for people to respond if there were problems occurring at that time. Thank you.
If I could just add really quick on that, it wasn't just CRESSA that had that issue. It was an issue throughout at least three other jurisdictions throughout the state. So that provides that side. I just want to make sure that the public knows it wasn't necessarily CRESSA.
Right, it's a broader issue.
Other questions by council?
I have a question on illegal fireworks. We know that there are some, very few hopefully, illegal fireworks that go off in our cities and unincorporated all over the place. Are those purchased out of state and brought in? Or are there some facilities in-state that sell them illegally?
I don't have any knowledge of that.
I can speak to that. So as Chief Nor says, some of these are manufactured by the individual using consumer fireworks, and then alters into illegal fireworks. People can actually purchase bottle rockets and things like that at tribal lands north of here in the state and in other states.
Other than that, Councilor Bowerman, the Fire Marshal's Office inspects all of our 40 stands in unincorporated.
Right.
And we look for that.
Have there ever been incidences of fires or other injuries from the beautiful public displays that used to be held like out at the fort and maybe at the port, things like that?
Professional pyro shows? I don't believe so. And I have a Fire Marshal that is, they have a certification for pyro, and they, there is a permit that they need to get, and they're inspected before the show, not that I know of. And I can share the one year that they did this at the fairgrounds, there was a little hiccup where it started a fire in a nearby dry field.
I'll also mention that one of the areas we serve is the Calis Indian Reservation. And while they haven't done it in several years, they have done fireworks displays there. And they essentially hire back some of our firefighters, or pay us to provide a unit on scene for immediate fire suppression. So in the professional type shows, you're going to have a lot of safety mechanisms in place. You're very likely going to have somebody on scene to immediately suppress the fire if there's an issue.
I've always felt that the professional events were a deterrent to excessive backyard usage. And I'm wondering, from your perspective, why is there a decline of interest in having those events?
I guess I would venture an answer to that, that they're very expensive to put on.
Yes, they are, but is that the reason?
I don't have any firsthand knowledge as to why people are not doing the events. I know that another one that had traditionally gone on by the Port of Camas-Washugle is not happening this year. I think that many of us who have lived here a good portion of our lives remember the annual Fort Vancouver display, the largest fireworks display west of the Mississippi. And we could probably do some research to determine why that is no longer happening. But I can tell you that as a teen, and then a person in my 20s, really used to enjoy that fireworks display.
I'll second that.
I can speak to the Vancouver show. I was working in Vancouver when that occurred, and then also when it was, when it stopped. Ironically, a lot of that was funded through fireworks sales in Vancouver. And when those became illegal, then a lot of that funding went away.
And I also see Glenn's got his finger on the button, but let me, because I did inquire of basically all three entities, trying to seek why we don't have public events anymore. Where I came from, Northern California, fireworks were pretty much illegal, except for the public community events, which were fabulous. And they were moneymakers for all of the nonprofits that participated. Some of the local high schools had them in their football stadium. Everyone participated. The whole community came. The Rotary Club in Kiwanis split the organizational responsibilities. Boy, it would be great to have events like that here, that people could go to, to celebrate the 4th of July, within a confined time period, in a confined area where fire suppression is readily available. Our own fairgrounds, you know, part of them, we had a fire there. So it's a culmination of things. One, there's a lot of activities and events that go on at our fairgrounds that compete and cause real organizational challenges for our fairgrounds manager. But the main thing is, there just isn't enough room for parking, for ingress and egress, and to support the bursting radius of these big mortars. I mean, if you're putting on a professional show, you need to map the terrain. And they just really don't have it available up there where it isn't a fire hazard, or wouldn't be a danger to the public that came to see it. Waschugle-Camas, I don't know if it's going to be the death mill. It could be, but the year, the problem they had this year is their construction. They've got construction down at the port, and they experienced last year basically gridlock. I mean, they actually had an instance where an emergency vehicle couldn't attend to get to someone who needed emergency care, because they just don't have the parking available, the road system available to handle the crowds. But with, the main reason they tanked it for this year was the ongoing construction, and pretty much, I think they're way behind. It'll probably go on to next year as well. Whether it comes back, I don't know. Obviously, a water venue, a waterfront venue is probably the most ideal place to have it, if you can have viewing and vendors available, where people can actually make it worthwhile to organize it and put it on. You know, Fort Vancouver, all of the above. And as you mentioned, losing the, the funding from fireworks sales kind of took away the nucleus of their funding stream. So as far as I know, we have no public events planned, which is really very sad for the 4th of July, having just done our proclamation. Anyway, Karen, I, that was just some insight, because I pretty much met with each of the entities over the last year, trying to encourage, hey, can we get, get back to some public event? Because that's really what we need to help control some of this. But Glenn, you had some questions?
Yeah, some questions, but also just kind of some comments and some thoughts is, you know, this is, to me, this is a really tough problem, because it's so hard to figure out exactly what is taking place. Those big mortars are illegal, right?
No, they are legal.
The ones that go up and blow up?
Yeah, there's a maximum of 60 grams of, we're getting technical on you here now, but 60 grams of pyrotechnic device, or pyrotechnic product in it. But they are, reloadable mortars are legal in the state of Washington. And I can't speak up to the size, but that's what's legal. Now, somebody may find a larger one that's outside of that and utilize it, but there'd be no way for us to tell as an enforcement agency which one was legal and which one wasn't.
So just, I mean, trying to understand the situation, the ones that we're seeing, are those legal?
Those are sold in the fireworks tents in unincorporated Clark County, as well as in Camas and the other small cities that allow a tent, or allow a sales venue.
Okay. You know, because my, my thing is, is that, you know, and I do agree, it is really sad. I remember going to the fort, I took my kids there, they loved it. You know, we went last year, I think it was, or I don't know, maybe the year before, Time flies so fast, the Port of Camas-Washugle. That was fun. Kids love it, enjoy it, have a good time. Kids love it, enjoy it, have a good time. And I remember being a kid, you know, the small stuff was fun too for us. You know, I'm not interested in, you know, taking away people's ability to enjoy the holiday with things that are very low risk and really the only risk they have is on their own property, you know. But these big ones that are going up, I mean, those are affecting other people. They're leaving the parcel. They're setting fires on their neighbors, not their own house. And on top of that, you have the noise and the concerns with that, with animals, with veterans and things like that. You know, I'm not for taking away people's ability to enjoy the holiday, but there does need to be some control over that. But my question would be too also that, you know, if we were to pass an ordinance that made things like those mortars illegal, what would the impact be? Because it's hard to study this because I remember when I was a kid, I grew up across the river. And we came to Vancouver on the Fourth of July because there were fireworks. I remember those Roman candles and stuff that were legal in Vancouver at that time and were not across the river. So, you know, when one jurisdiction closes access to fireworks, there is, you know, I don't know what it is, I don't know how we could study it, but there's a lot of people that just move into the area where it is legal. So there's that issue that we're contending with. I'm curious, like, what would happen if we reduce those ones that go really far up into the air? Not the little cone that shoots six feet up in the air or something like that, but the ones that go really way up there. What kind of impact are we going to have? You know, are we going to be able to enforce it? Because I know that, you know, I don't know how well Vancouver's able to enforce their ordinance, but I'm sure that it's a little bit easier because people can leave and go to unincorporated Clark County and set fireworks off. So, you know, if we were to ban those particular items or come up with, you know, some new plan of things that were banned, what would the enforcement look like? And would it be feasible?
I can speak to that a little bit. I think one of the things that would make it much easier to enforce is if there was a consistent rule across the region on it. So just what you're saying there, Counselor, that if I can cross the street and use a different fireworks than I can on this side of the street, I'm probably going to go over there and use them over there, right? Or I'm going to go buy them there and take them back and use them at my home even if they're not allowed in that area. So a consistent rule throughout our area, throughout the county or throughout the region would make it much more helpful. I will say that one of the things I learned through this process, and every day's a chance to learn, and on how a Class B misdemeanor works in Washington and how a law enforcement officer in Washington must witness the Class B misdemeanor. So that's not the same in all states and all jurisdictions, but it is across Washington. So if you, if you read about enforcement in Portland or Multnomah County, the officers can go and say, I think there's reasonable suspicion that you lit this off and here's your fine. In Washington, they must witness it. And there's only a certain number of police officers and they're trying to be in a lot of places at one time on July 4th. So unless they see somebody lighting that firework, that illegal firework or that's not right for that jurisdiction, they can't do anything about it. And so that's what makes enforcement difficult here in our region.
Not to mention that people want to take the Fourth of July off. So there's that probably, you know, pressure, there's not as many officers available.
I'm probably one of the most unpopular fire chiefs in the county because I don't let anybody take vacation on the Fourth of July. They can find their own replacement, but they can't make us run short by taking vacations.
And then the other question I have is, does anybody know why in the world the state has a restriction of $100 for permit? Is that just some archaic rule or, because, you know, I would be, I would absolutely be supportive of trying to figure out if there was a way that we as a community can create a show or fund a show, you know? And if fireworks sales would be a viable option, I would be interested in pursuing that. But I'm, you know, very hesitant. I'm all for reducing the dangerous ones that cause problems outside of your property. But small, you know, I'm so hesitant to reduce that use when there's nothing available publicly. So if we could look into that as a council, you know, how we might be able to work with other jurisdictions or something to find a venue to offer to the public, I would be supportive of that. And thank you, I appreciate all the work and the comments.
Thank you for that, Glenn. You can join me in my efforts that I gave up on since I've been trying to do it for a couple of years. So since we were ruminating, I did want to comment because I had it on my list of comments. And based on your question, there is nothing in my view that we can do locally. You know, the, as long as mortars are legal in the state of Washington, there is nothing we can do. As long as the reservations can sell them and import them, there is nothing we can do. Because we have virtually no enforcement right now. It's too dangerous for our fire marshals to send out crew to even try to confiscate illegal fireworks or fireworks that are being used illegally. And it gets to the issue of law enforcement. It's a statewide issue. You have to, if you have to view the crime occurring, I will tell you that, you know, and obviously, just use California as an example, but I could go back to my early days in New Jersey as well. Our misdemeanor departments, what we would call District Court here, especially approaching and around the Fourth of July, we're flush with misdemeanor cases of people unlawfully possessing fireworks. And they could be just firecrackers. There was enforcement, there was actually criminal penalties. People knew. You know, most of it was, so you didn't have to witness the crime, you just had to see him with it. And usually there were other crimes involved. If you had an improvised explosive device, like you described, some of the homemade stuff, and I had a local resident telling me that he was shooting bowling balls up into the air with gunpowder that he had bought at a local gun store. You know, ultra hazardous duty in other states, that's a felony, you know? And improvised explosive device above a certain size, you know, and that would include the federal bans on cherry bombs and AM8s and things like that. It was a felony crime. It would, it could bring prison time for making something like that and simply possessing it. You know, it comes to our attention when someone blows themselves up and they die or get grievously injured. But, so enforcement is a huge thing and we don't have it. So no matter what local code we would pass, it would be totally ineffective without code enforcement. And I would just add, one other thing, because I had brought it up publicly years ago when we essentially reversed the prior council on allowing fireworks sales. It was my plea to the public to take personal responsibility, to follow the rules. I mean, this is a balance that we even allow any fireworks whatsoever. But it's completely out of balance when people violate the rules and go beyond the times, go late at night, go two days of firing fireworks that are available locally beyond what's allowed. Eventually, we're going to, you know, the effort needs to be at the state to begin with to get control of this. But we try to allow people to celebrate the Fourth of July reasonably. That doesn't, I mean, it all impacts the greater public from wildlife, as you mentioned, to people around. And it only takes a few bad actors, you know, when they're setting off a mortar at 3:00 in the morning a week before the Fourth of July or four months after the Fourth of July. It just, I mean, that impacts the entirety of the community. And that, from my personal experience, I will tell you, the first time I was up here, when I first moved up here, and I think I, you know, like most veterans, suffer some amount of post-traumatic stress disorder. And it was not the Fourth of July. And I heard what I thought was a refinery explosion. It sounded, it reminded me of being in Baghdad and listening to an improvised explosive device going off. I was like, holy crap, what was that? It's different up here and it's because the state allows it. And anyway, those are just my thoughts and the lack of community events really aggravates the situation. I wish we had them. I wish the Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, other nonprofits would brainstorm, figure out how we do this and where a good, safe venue would be so that families can go and take their kids, like I always enjoyed, taking my kids or as a kid going myself. We can't have nothing. And I've been to shows where, you know, the light show and the drones light show, I'm sorry, it's not the same. You know, viscerally, it may be entertaining, it may be pretty, but it's not the same as rockets red glare. In any case, those are all my comments. Other questions by council or other comments by council?
Chair, if I could add. Under Sheriff and Chief Kessel have also a couple of things to add to this, so if they can, we have limited room up front, so if we could add them into their, I don't know if the fire is done with that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, please, go ahead.
Since we're talking about enforcement, on the Fourth, in my experience, enforcement is relatively easy because it's allowed, right? So you're going to see fireworks and at that point, you're just checking to make sure that they are the legal type and they're being used properly. The problem, as I see it, is the duration of sales. So when you start sales on June 28th, you have six days to prepare for one day. And people are tempted, understandably so, to discharge outside of the Fourth. So enforcement for us begins on the 28th, even if they're only legal on the Fourth.
So I want to give you a counterpoint to that because at one point, this council said, we want enforcement from our fire marshal and other services. We want enforcement, strict enforcement. And what, and then when we got a briefing after the fact, well, we put in a fine, but they appealed it, so we waived it, or, you know, we just let them take their fireworks back. It was, we gave them a warning and let them go. The vast impact was there was no enforcement. It was just live and let live. We didn't have fines put in place. And if you don't have enforcement, people will do whatever they want. And I appreciate that maybe enforcement could be easier on the Fourth of July for illegal fireworks, especially in places like Vancouver where it is illegal or other cities that only have safe and sane. It's not happening as far as I know. I haven't heard of it, them being charged in our district court. So I appreciate, I wish there was enforcement. We asked for it as a council. We said, please, we have new, when we first put new hours in place and days in place, we need a time to educate the public, but we need to do that through enforcement as well. And we didn't get it.
Just one more quick comment. I'd be, I would be interested in discussing the days that fireworks sales are open. I don't know if we'll get to that today.
Thank you for coming.
Good morning, Council. Jim Hanson, Under Sheriff for the record, joined by esteemed Associate Chief Kessel. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We don't have a presentation for you today. It's really more a matter of making ourselves available for what questions the council may have. I would like to tell you that I'd like to compliment Director Firth and her staff for the data that they provided. It's obvious to me that they found it an easier path to being more precise with the data that they provided. We've been asked by the council a couple of different times to provide data and we've since done so. And I would describe it as being somewhat squishy by nature. It's much more imprecise than what it was that Director Firth provided. And then before we get to your questions, I would also compliment Chief Nor, both with his prepared comments and in response to some of your questions. He did us a solid by answering, you know, a lot of what it is that we would have to share with you in terms of the difficulties in enforcement from a law enforcement standpoint. So he did a remarkable job, so thank you for that.
And I would just echo again on the data that was presented. It is a little squishy because unfortunately, there was a hiccup with the 911 system, so the numbers aren't really defined for last year because the one call could have triggered five calls, you know, because either the system was trying to keep calling it in or the homeowner would continue to call it in at the time it was down.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, County Manager. And I would add to that, that initially, when we tried to focus in on what we could reasonably define as being very specific fireworks-related calls, the numbers were somewhat scant and certainly much less than what kind of anecdotally we understood, you know, the reality to be. And so when we expanded our scope, we found that we had a difficult time of, you know, then establishing a scope where we were reasonably including what should be included and what shouldn't be. And it's just, it's the nature of how people call in to Cressa and what it is that they're reporting and how it is that we go out and respond to the scene. So the data was difficult for us to collect and report to you.
Council Marshal.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions related to enforcement. I understand that it's very difficult and this whole issue is very complex and difficult, multi-pronged, state legislation, local firework display, fundraising, it's a difficult thing. I like to think there can be some progress though, at the same time, related to fireworks and making it more safe for the public. And I guess in looking at, I think with the cities, may I, here's a question, the cities, do they have the ability to regulate that, this for themselves? So in terms of when sales can begin, when it's legal to discharge, there's variance across the cities as well as the county. So even if we took action, it wouldn't apply to all of the cities, correct?
That's correct. And I think Chief Nor spoke to that in part. There is state law that provides general guidance and then each legislative body within a municipal city or a county can then pass its own ordinances that are more restrictive than what state law is. And so we know that the city of Vancouver has done that.
That'd be very difficult to have consistency even across the county unless everyone decided to step up.
With the collaboration of each one of those legislative bodies, absolutely.
Yes, yes. And, you know, this is, we're talking about this on the eve of opening of fireworks sales. And discharge will begin, I think, June 29th in some areas of my district. And this is the, this is the issue that I've received the most emails on of people complaining about fireworks. So I feel compelled to really try to pursue this in some way to make it safer and more, less of a nuisance really for the community. So, you know, we can't really do anything at this late date for this year, but I would like, it would be my desire to still look at this issue and hopefully folks will come back and report on how things went this year and maybe earlier, earlier in the year than the day before sales start occurring. So thank, thank you all for that.
Sure. And I would just say that the, while the legal date for discharge of fireworks is approaching, the discharge of fireworks is ongoing probably as we speak. And, you know, and part of the problem we have is that people hear those discharges taking place and they call in to Cressa. And by the time that we can get into the area where we believe that occurred, they're done. And it's just, I know that both Chief Kessel and I have had the experience of working specialized patrols in years past on the Fourth of July and he and I were commenting on how frustrating it was to spend an entire shift specifically looking for fireworks violators. it was to spend an entire shift specifically looking for fireworks violators, and one by one by one, getting to calls, and either they're not there anymore, they're done by the time you get there, or there's a group of five, six, 12 people, and fireworks have clearly been discharged, and you don't have the foggiest idea who it is that discharged them and therefore can't take legal action.
If there are lobbying efforts, suggestions from law enforcement as to what could make your job easier across the board? I mean, again, I've been trying to say, I really think the solution lies first and foremost with the state, and then we'll have to bring in the tribes, which is a different issue. Anyway, if you have suggestions on lobbying efforts for the next legislative session, let us know. I also did want to point out, because it was kind of rare, and we see it from the emails from time to time, I think people confuse what I would consider arson events. You know, oh, we had this big fire, forest fire, south of the river, jumped the river, came west and skumied it. And it was a juvenile. And it was a smoke bomb. And it was thrown into vegetation. That was an arson. I mean, that was reckless disregard for the public. I mean, I got evacuated myself with the fire a couple of years ago up on the hill just east of here. That was reckless discharge. And they had people on camera kind of doing it. So again, it goes to personal responsibility, it goes to criminal law, it goes to enforcement. I wish we had the ability, and I did, we did hear from the fire marshal team that, hey, you get, especially if mixed alcohol or other inebriants around the Fourth of July, we don't want to engage with people that are doing it because it's too dangerous for us. We're not post-certified law enforcement out there to defend ourselves and making it a ref. So we do have a lot of challenges. Anything else you wanted to add today?
I don't think so. I just recognize that it's a very complex issue for which there's no simple answer. I've heard some great ideas from the council, and we would look forward to partnering with you and others, however we can, as we continue to address the issue. And I don't know, Chief, nope. Thank you.
Further questions?
No, no questions, just a quick comment. I would be interested in seeing if the council would be supportive of talking about our ordinance and looking into what we allow to be discharged, what's legal, what's not, and also the times of the year that they're able to be sold, the dates.
I would be interested in people following the rules we have in place right now, and I beseech everyone to enjoy themselves on the Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July, within hours, with legal fireworks. Don't make your own, and please be safe.
Just to respond to your thought, I'd be interested in if there's a way to follow up in looking at either state legislation or what we can do at the county or collaborations within the community.
Is there a third counselor interested in pursuing that? I hear silence. If there's nothing further, I want to thank everyone once again for updating us on where we're at and what's happening, and hopefully, people will be, follow the rules and the guidance. I mean, there's plenty out there, especially extinguishing your fireworks properly, and don't put in a trash bin right up against your house and let it smolder overnight and catch fire. Be mindful of your neighbors, please. Anything further? Otherwise, we'll adjourn. Okay, we do stand adjourned.